I would like to call the Fairfield County Council Special Meeting to order. Winsboro, South Carolina, Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, 5:30 PM. Can we have approval of the agenda?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
It's been moved and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, let it be known by the word aye.
Aye.
Poses nay? No nays stand approved. Vice Chair Green, would you give us an invocation, please?
Your heavenly Father, as we come before, we ask that you give us the ability to make decisions that will be beneficial to all of our citizens. Pray in your name, amen.
Amen. Okay, we're down to old business. This is a special meeting to report of the Ad Hoc Committee on the Review of Existing Contract Concerning New Administration Building. Again, this is a piece of work we decided to go ahead and look because we had been hearing concerns about the money being, how much money it was costing us. And then there was some strepancy in the money that was said we had to pay versus some that you didn't have to pay. So again, and we just wanted to have a total look at the contract. Ms. Green, our vice chair decided, I mean, what she did was lead this piece of work for the council. So again, we want to thank her in the beginning for all the work that she had done in this effort. So again, we're going to turn it over to you, Ms. Green.
Thank you. First, I'd like to make sure that everyone can hear me. Okay. So you'll have to excuse me, I have to move this because it feels like that dog collar that you use when the dogs have an operation. So excuse me. If you don't have a copy of the report, you can see Patty over there and she can give you one. So just make sure that you get a copy.
Pardon me if you're, I'm so sorry.
Thank you so much. Basically, what we tried to do is take a timeline to look at the contract and what had occurred so far. And of course, in 2017, Mr. Rory Dowling of First in Maine Development proposed the renovations of Mount Zion Institute for the new administration building. I think that most of you have heard that this was proposed because the thought was that for all the various spaces that are currently rented for Fairfield County services, that this would be a better option, that it would be a cheaper option. In 2018, the county council agreed to have Dowling renovate the building using various tax credits and use the site as the county administration building. We've kind of outlined some of the tax credits below, just as a part of that attachment. You'll see number one underneath there where we referenced some of the tax credits that were used. In 2018, an ordinance was passed to move forward with the renovations and lease agreement. And Fairfield County approved at the September 10th, 2018 meeting. And on October 8th, 2018, county council adopted ordinance 707, authorizing the execution of that lease. County council created an escrow account in the amount of $1 million. And they in turn developed an escrow agreement that went into effect June 30th, 2020. And that was between the county, the developer, and Branch Banking and Trust, most of us know it as BBNT, as the escrow agent. And that contract was written in a way that granted the developer and the county administrator access to funds to uplift the building. And this meant that the $1 million fund went beyond what's normally called the construction risk agreement. On February 10th, 2021, Fairfield Council Chairman Moses Bell appointed an ad hoc committee to review the existing contract of the administration building. And of course, the ad hoc committee consisted of myself, Councilman Timothy Roseborough, and Councilman Cornelius Robinson. To accomplish the contract review, the committee held a public meeting on Monday, March 15th, 2021. And the discussion included Mr. Rory Dowling, an attorney to Mika Isaac Devine, representing First in Maine. And representing Fairfield County was Mr. Ray E. Jones, our bond attorney. Mr. Dowling circulated a list of questions and answers with photographs of the new administration building. And he asked to expound, he was asked to expound on the questions since the citizens in attendance were not provided copies of that document. And you should have that document today in your handouts. It has the pictures of the buildings and the questions and comments that he made. The county council underwrote costs associated with research produced by Dr. Elijah Gaddis, Mount Zion and the History of Education in Fairfield County, and historical resource report. And this was not considered an outfit and not paid out of the escrow account. Both council and the developer paid $6,500 each to Dr. Gaddis. He received a total of $13,000 for his research. Mr. Dowling hopes to deliver the cafeteria portion. Mr. Dowling is, of course, the contractor or the developer, hopes to deliver the cafeteria portion of this complex on or about June 1st, 2021. Mr. Jones, our bond attorney, provided some confidential contract information to county council for review, and that is in the county council packet only. Mr. Jones stated that any discussion intended to reverse the agreement would have to be done in an executive session when a question was posed with the cost only be $1 million to break the administration building lease agreement. The financial implications that we have, the initial term of the contract to lease the $45,454 square feet complex with estimated base rent for seven years was $3,885,885.06. The rent start date was proposed to be the date the landlord delivers the premise to the tenant with the landlord work substantially completed. There were rights to extend the terms of the lease. On January 27th, 2020, Fairfield Council adopted an ordinance number 740, authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to the administration building lease, stating the purpose of the amendment was to amend and clarify some of the terms and conditions of the original lease, including, but not limited to, amending the approximate square footage of the premise from $45,452 to 51,016 square feet. Additionally, the county has the right to extend the terms of the lease for three additional periods of five years. Base rent for the first lease year of the first option term, that is after this lease, after they do the five-year lease, would be $713,211.45. And the base year thereafter of the option term would be an amount that's 2.5% greater than the base rent for immediate preceding lease year. The lease was also amended to include certain provisions relating to new market tax credits financing, including the execution and delivery of a tax credit lease that shall automatically convert to a sublease of the premise upon execution of the tax lease. Specifically, the county executed an amendment to the lease agreement with the developer to lease the entire complex for $600,000 per year for seven years totaling $4.2 million. The county also has an option to purchase the complex that the developer has invested $13.5 million into for only $4.5 million. Current questions answered by the developer in a March 15th handout. What is the total cost of the development? And I've just given you that total cost at $13.5 million. And talked a little bit about how much the county would pay. How much will the county pay towards the project cost? And again, that amount was given at $8.7 million. Therefore, through this partnership between the county and the developer, the developer can save the county $4.8 million, or 36% of the total cost by leveraging various tax credits, only available to private developers. The federal historic rehabilitation tax credit, new market tax credit, state abandoned building tax credits, and state historic rehabilitation tax credits. And just for your information, most investors will pay, I think it's something like 75 cents on a dollar for those credits. The financial status, on February 27th, 2020, a construction risk escrow account was established with BBNT and in the amount of $1 million in case the county defaulted on the agreement. This escrow agreement is effective on June 30th, 2020, and is entered into among Fairfield County, South Carolina, and Maine, and First in Maine Development LLC and Branch Banking and Trust, a North Carolina banking corporation that spelled out in the usage of the term. On April 8th, Mr. Ray Jones wrote to Mr. Taylor that the concept of construction risk deposit is provided in section 19 of the development agreement. The parties with you acting on behalf of the county are permitted to amend the development agreement so long as amendment is agreed to in writing. By their execution of the dispersment request, there was an attached agreement. The parties modified the operation of the escrow to provide for payment of expenses for the project. The development agreement did not require approval of county council to make those changes. So for the record, I know that Mount Zion has, there's been lots of talks, many efforts to give misinformation about what the role of the ad hoc committee was and other things. And there are some things that are concerning about Mount Zion. So for the record, governmental decisions should be based on the interests of all communities affected. The choice to place the seat of local government on a site that embodies Fairfield County's segregated past excludes the total community. At no point during the early stages of this project was adaptive reuse of a facility the only focus of redevelopment. In hiring Dr. Gaddis, Peter Thomas, the county council invested significant resources to research the heritage of Mount Zion, which addresses only a fraction of the community, but does not include the total community, including its black citizens. This inequitable allocation of research funding produced a narrative that reinforced and affirmed Mount Zion's past, even recommended that the renovation include museum displays of the building's origin. Without consideration of how presentation of this historic perspective is isolating, affects, affected, in isolation affects black citizens. Due consideration should be given to the ascension of black citizens from slavery and Jim Crow to roles as contributing citizens obtained through education and activism. The Mount Zion project symbolizes the crossroads in Fairfield County. Will we change to be a welcoming community where business and industry can thrive and grow in an environment of unity, continued growth, and shared recognition? Or do we make decisions that divide us without awareness of the value of all our citizens? Hopefully, this report and observations will help us citizens examine ourselves and our commitment to fairness and unity. We're strong together, but we must choose inclusion to capitalize on this strength. So many people ask, what have we learned? You know, what is it that you found out after you took a look at this contract? Some of the things that we learned, we learned that the contract narrative of $8.7 million, while true as it relates to the contract, the narrative does not include the building's outfit. The 911 call center alone is expensive and requires a lot of outfit for that building and a lot of particular things. So we take a look at just that cost along, it really amounts to, in the neighborhood of $400,000 or more. With other upfits, the costs could go up to $9.7 million. So the big question goes, all right, well, what are you talking about? Why are you including that? That's not what the contract says. So we have to really take a look at the narrative that is a part of what we're doing. The narrative is relating to the contract, that's correct. But say, for instance, you go out and buy a car. If you go out and buy the car and you take the model as it is on the lot and don't want anything else, you walk out of the door with that car and it is what you purchased. If you go to the lot and you say to the person, I would rather have, I want to have leather seats in that car, or I want something else, I want a different braking system in that car, I want anything else, it is an outfit. And that's what we're talking about. So you pay for that. You don't walk off that lot with just what the contract price for that car might be. You're going to walk off the lot with that car, with the things that you want in it. And that's basically what we have to do as a county. When we walk, when we walk into this building, we need certain things. We need the 911 call center. We need to make sure that all of the other electrical and other kinds of things are appropriate for what we need. Simple things, as the developer said, where there is a need for a glass office front for someone instead of a solid wall, those kinds of things are upfits. And those are the kinds of things that we look at. So let's be realistic in taking a look at what we're talking about. And it is the things that we need. You know, those are the things that we need to make our staff and others comfortable when they go into that building. The other thing that we know is that the $1 million escrow account went beyond the contractor risk agreement. So the developer and the county administrator had access to the funds to update the building without use of a procurement policy or without council approval. We also learned that the lack of timely scope and planning and plan modifications and upfits caused delays, as expressed by the developer, that may result in extended general conditions. And what those extended general conditions normally are, are a charge. And one of the things that the developer talked about early on, and it is just, you know, talk because there are legal things that have to occur if someone really is talking about extended general conditions. And that was estimated to be $1,587.25 per day. While the new administration building contract review ad hoc committee had no contract authority. Okay, and let me state that again, no contract authority. We're only reporting back to this committee as we are doing tonight. The developer assumed that the council was seeking to cancel the contract and stopped allowing Mr. Taylor, our county administrator, to use the escrow account, resulting in additional costs after March 15th. Outside of the escrow account, budget appropriations for upfits, furniture, moving expenses are unclear. The developer wants the lease payments and other kinds of things shown in our budget. That's one of the things that he is looking for. The developer has exhausted his $900,000 contingency fund, which raises questions regarding the financial viability of how he completes this project. The narrative regarding the adaptive use of Mount Zion The narrative regarding the adaptive use of Mount Zion as Fairfield County's administration building should be clear. It is the seat of government for Fairfield County. And I'll state that again. The narrative regarding the adaptive use of Mount Zion as Fairfield County administration building should be clear. It is the seat of government for Fairfield County. While the committee has not seen anything to date suggesting that, that there is any need to, to be concerned, we think that we take a look at the historical perspective, as I mentioned before, of all citizens. And we want to make sure that we formally recognize the contributions of all citizens of Fairfield County. There are questions, council members?
Yes, ma'am, I have probably several questions. Now, what did you say caused the delays in construction?
The delays in, in construction were caused by basic upfits, some upfits. And it also was caused by the fact that the developer had stopped allowing Mr. Taylor to use the escrow account.
Okay. I guess because I, I'm looking at this list, and one of the things it is, is that I guess some of these changes were made, were requested in January and February of this, of this year. Right?
Right. I also think that you have changes that were requested and some items that were not invoiced.
Okay.
So it's based on the ones that were invoiced.
So is, so the delays look like it come, it came from a delay in requesting the changes?
Probably in some, in some instances, yeah. The scope of work is the way that the developer explained it. Some delays in the scope of work are basically what had to get done when. And the, the huge part, the last one was the, the switch had to be ordered. And that was the one that we approved at the last Fairfield County Council.
And, and I guess, and another question is, as we talk about the switch, do you know why we just, we were just requesting the switch gear? I know he told us that, that, that the county had looked at, the county had looked at all the change requests and they had approved the plans, but, but 911 wasn't a consideration or something, what he was telling us?
I'm, I'm not sure about, about exactly why.
Okay. So all of these changes on this list, on the spreadsheet was, was due to, I guess, the item that we needed, but, but they were, they came at a very late date.
Yeah, they were, they were up, they were up, up fits that, you know. And when we say came at a very late date, we basically are saying that they came based on when the contractor said he, he needed, he had requested that the county look at the scope of work. So that's based on that date that he requested that.
Are there any other questions from any other council members?
No questions but a comment. I just wanted to thank Ms. Green for her research, you know, I'd be remiss if I take any credit for this, so thank you.
Okay. If not, that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Again, I thank council, I'm total counsel, thanks, Ms. Green, for, for looking at and reviewing the contract and also reviewing the, the, um, the costs to, the, the total costs to the county. Because it looked like it's going to be around, if I hear it right, around 9.7 million versus 8.7 million.
Right, right. And that's, and that's including the?
The upfits. Yeah, and that's including escrow.
Where the upfits are coming.
So we talking about another million extra for the project. Is there no other questions? Any other questions? If not, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, that we be adjourned. All in favor, let it be known by aye.
Aye.
Opposed is nay? We stand adjourned.